Yes.
They have five.
So certain.
No. Brian, you're going to ask questions. Is that what you're here for?
Uh, I mean, I did have a question, but, um, okay, well, I was just gonna say for the next half hour. Now, I don't know much to think so on it. This is the organization.
Okay.
So. Bye. Please. I'll give you the opportunity to ask about it at that point.
Okay.
And then we'll go to there. I find you have a hearing also scheduled.
Okay.
That's none of that will start till seven thirty.
That's fine.
All right, are we, um, live on Zoom now?
Yes, you are.
Okay. We'll turn on the mics, uh, and you've already set it to record?
Yes.
Very good. And we'll call the, uh, organizational meeting of the Harlem Township, uh, zoning commission to order for the two thousand twenty-four year. Uh, would you call the role, please, Danielle?
All right, uh, Mike Kavler.
Here.
Joni Manson.
Here.
Tom Need.
Here.
Virginia Lewis.
Here.
Brittany Hooper.
Here.
Okay, um, and our zoning inspector, director, uh, Mike Cannon is present. We have a couple of members of the public who are present, uh, was, was there a sign up sheet yet?
Um, I can get a sign up sheet.
Yeah, well, um.
Didn't really have one for the.
Bruce McCleary is, uh, on the strategic planning committee and, uh, Brian Eckert, am I getting it right?
Oh, no.
Just as a member of the public. That's, that's Brian over there.
That's not Austin.
Totally different situation. He's going to be one to ask you about.
And I don't think we have anyone who's joined us on Zoom, have?
Uh, there is no participants.
Okay. Uh, well, um, then at that time I'll relinquish the chair to the secretary to move forward. So at this point, then that's where we are on this agenda. Uh, we just go down the list now. We have to deal with all of these motions.
Um, well, then can I have a nomination for chair effective for the year twenty twenty-four?
Um, I nominate, uh, Mike Kavler for the position of chair and audio visual specialist.
Well. I will continue. I will accept the nomination. And I got a second, so, okay, it won't die for lack of a second.
No, it won't.
Uh, go ahead, Danielles. You're still in charge.
Right. Um, are there any other nominations for chair? No? All right. Are there, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay. Um, well, then may I have a roll call vote for the chair for the year twenty twenty-four? All right, um, it's going to be Mike Kavler.
Aye.
Tom Need.
Aye.
Joni Manson.
Hi.
Uh, Brittany Hooper.
Hi.
Virginia Lewis.
Hi.
All right.
All right. Well, thank you all very much, uh, I think. We'll continue to move this process forward. Uh, I think my term expires in twenty-six as, uh, a member of the commission. I'm not, I looked at that, but now I don't remember who's next, uh, at the end of this year, but we've got a whole year to make sure that we deal with that because we, we don't want to forget to do it and we want to try to encourage some alternates. We still have no alternates at this point. Okay, well, um, all right, moving down, uh, since I'm back, uh, in terms of the chair acting as chairperson, um, and we will need a motion regarding, uh, when we will schedule our regular meetings and it's on the agenda here. Someone want to make that motion?
You missed that section. You skipped the vice chair section. Do you need to do that?
Oh, I skipped it. Sorry. My bad.
No.
I, I did.
Was that a volunteer?
I was going down trying to find the next one and I skipped over. We do need, um, the chair now. I'm asking for nominations for the vice chair for the year twenty twenty-four and, um, unless there's someone, I, I'll go ahead and nominate Joni if you will accept it again, Joni.
I will unless somebody else wants it. I will definitely relinquish it if somebody else wants it.
I will second Joni being the nomination.
Okay. Uh, so it's been moved and seconded, uh, Joni Manson for vice chair. Um, discussion on the motion. We've already had a little bit of discussion. Uh, Joni is happy to accept it. Maybe.
Don't know about happy.
Well, willingly, willingly accepts it, uh, and is willing to relinquish it if someone else is interested in doing those duties. Hearing no further comment on it then, um, if there's no further discussion, hearing none, then we'll have a roll call vote on the nomination of, uh, Joni Manson for vice chair. Danielle, would you call the role?
Oh, yes. All right, that will be, all right, Mike Kavler.
Aye.
Uh, uh, Joni Manson.
Hi.
Tom Need.
Aye.
Virginia Lewis.
Here.
Uh, Brittany Hooper.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Uh, now we're going to go to the item, uh, regarding our first of the meetings, uh, for twenty twenty-four. Um, the first Monday of January has already passed. So, uh, from this point forward, this motion would potentially apply the way that it reads. Is there someone that wants to make this motion or?
I'll, I'll, yeah, I will move that the Harlem Township Zoning Commission meet on the first Monday of each month at seven thirty PM unless a holiday falls on that day, in which case the meeting will be held on Tuesday at seven thirty PM at the Township Firehouse, thirty-eight eighty-three South State Route, six oh five, Galena, Ohio, four three oh two one.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. I have a question for the strategic planning folks. Can't remember now. Or your meeting once a month, is it on the first Tuesday? Okay, I thought it was, so that.
But it's before seven thirty, right?
We start at six thirty.
Will it be over by the time we need it, seven thirty?
We.
If we need it to be.
I'm at, the reason I'm bringing it up is I thought, oh, well, if it works out that you're meeting on the third Tuesday, we never have a problem, but, uh, like Labor Day, for example, coming up, we know that's going to be on a Monday.
And I think, um, I'm okay. It'd be on a Monday.
So, uh, there might be another one coming along there somewhere.
But, um, Tom, I think we already decided that we were gonna meet on the twenty-second.
Yes.
Oh, this month.
This month.
Yeah.
Or that we, that we, we could if we need to.
Yeah.
I think it's the way we put, yeah.
Yeah.
I've got.
And I've, uh, communicated that to Scott, so he's planning on being here, sure.
Okay.
Uh, all right, uh, well, if there's any kind of a conflict that develops then with strategic planning, we'll, we'll work it out at the time. We do have the option of using the, uh, Grange Hall if we need to, uh, but, uh, when we're having public participation, it's always better to do it here.
Yes, uh, and I think, uh, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll work it out.
Yeah, that sounds fine. All right, so, uh, with that, if there's no further discussion, we'll move forward with a roll call. All right, Danielle, would you call the, uh, role on the motion to set our meeting dates?
Okay, uh, Mike Kavler.
Aye.
All right, Virginia Lewis.
Hi.
All right. Um, Tom Need.
Aye.
Joni Manson.
Hi.
Brittany Hooper.
Hi.
Okay, the meeting has now been set. Our regular meeting will be on the first Monday of each month unless it falls on a holiday and then we would go to a Tuesday. The next motion will deal with our workshop meeting. Someone will make that motion?
I make a motion that the Harlem Township Zoning Commission meet for a workshop meeting on the second Monday of each month at seven thirty PM unless the holiday falls on that day, in which case the meeting will be held on Tuesday at seven thirty PM at the Harlem Township Firehouse, three eight eight three, South State Route, six oh five, Galena, Ohio, four three zero two one, with a maximum length of two hours.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Virginia, seconded the motion. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, we stay with our standard practice that we've had for several years. So it looks like with, uh, no further discussion on the motion. Again, Danielle, coming back to you, we call the role.
All right, that, uh, Mike Kavler.
Aye.
Joni Manson.
Hi.
Tom Need.
Aye.
Virginia Lewis.
Hi.
Brittany Hooper.
Hi.
All right, thank you all. Motion carries, so we will be meeting on the second Monday, continuing. Um, at this point, uh, Danielle, I'm going to request that you notify the township's paper of record regarding the meeting dates in order to fulfill our sunshine law for twenty twenty-four. Uh, now going on to the next motion, uh, this one deals with preliminary meeting regarding the planned district and simply specifies that those meetings also will be limited to two hours. Is there, uh, someone who'd like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Tom Needs, seconded by.
Second.
Brittany. Okay, any discussion on this motion?
Does that include overlays and straight plan districts? Are we choosing to differentiate at all?
I don't think we have preliminary meetings for, um, the overlays, do we? Didn't they take that out?
Did we?
I think so.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah, the plan, uh, anytime we would have a preliminary meeting, this would apply. If, if we label a preliminary meeting, so if we would do that for a PRCD, but typically, I, I think what Joni's saying, they're not, that's not a required step. We did talk about that and putting that in, but it's not in there as a required.
We put it in and then the.
And then it took it out. Good point. Yes, that is what happened. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, then we'll vote on it, uh. Again, Danielle, would you call the role? Aye.
Joni Manson.
Hi.
Tom Need.
Aye.
Virginia Lewis.
Hi.
Brittany Hooper.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. The next motion deals with, um, procedural guidelines for zoning amendments. Um, and the form that we have been using. We have, um, revised it and it may get revised again, but the motion stated in such a way that it says the current, use the current procedural guidelines for zoning amendments form or amendment of the township. So, so if it gets changed.
We could just change the word current to approved.
That would work, okay? Because if we modify it during the year, then there would be a new form approved.
Yeah.
By us, yes, okay. So we're going to modify it before we have a motion. Uh, it hasn't been moved yet, but we're going to change the wording, cross out current and change it to approved. All right, now, someone willing to make a move, move this as a motion?
I make a motion that the Harlem Township Zoning Commission use the current, I'm sorry, approved procedural guidelines for zoning amendments form for amendment of the township zoning map.
Second.
All right, moved by Brittany, seconded by Virginia. Discussion on the motion. Hearing no further discussion, then Danielle, would you call the role?
All right. Mike Kavler.
Aye.
Joni Manson.
Hi.
Tom Need.
Aye.
Virginia Lewis.
Hi.
Brittany Hooper.
Hi. All right, I was thinking about something else.
That was kind of a soft eye. All right, so the motion carries, um, so procedural guidelines are adopted, approved, uh, moving down to the next motion, um, I, I will go ahead and move that the Harlem Township Zoning Commission adopt the Roberts Rules of, uh, of Order as the authority on procedures for conduct of the meetings. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, just.
Second.
Johnny seconded. Any discussion on this motion? All right, um, see no, hearing no further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, Danielle, would you call the role, please?
All right, Mike Kavler.
Aye.
Joni Manson.
Hi.
Tom Need.
Aye.
Virginia Lewis.
Hi.
Brittany Hooper.
Hi.
Okay, and the next item deals with, um, alternates. Uh, I, I just identify them. We don't do anything other than to name them so that, uh, we, we have them listed, but we have no alternates, so if, uh, either Bruce or Brian are interested, there's two vacancies, so, uh, please feel free to submit a request to serve in that capacity to the trustees. It's a simple process, an email or a letter. And then the last motion is adjournment of the organizational meeting.
And make a motion to adjourn the Harlem Township Zoning Commission organizational meeting.
And a second.
Second.
Seconded by Brittany. Moved by Joni, seconded by Brittany. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, then Danielle will move forward. You call the role on the motion to adjourn.
All right, Mike Kavler.
Aye.
Joni Manson.
Hi.
Tom Need.
Aye.
Virginia Lewis.
Hi.
Brittany Hooper.
Right.
And in such a habit, I need you call the role instead of just taking the voice call. So we are adjourned and now we have about ten minutes between meetings.
Seven twenty.
Sorry, you, you said your name is Austin?
Yes.
And your last name is?
Sullivan.
Sullivan, okay, thank you.
It's the ones that we used in two zero two four. I'll keep those.
Am I allowed to go ask Mike the question? Well.
Go ahead.
Okay.
So I have a question, please.
Yeah.
Come on. So this was a while. This probably happened. But I was reading, um.
Think she, she went to check on these.
What happens?
I don't think she turned off the minutes.
I haven't seen.
She never emailed them out.
So.
When we had, when they had it launched.
She did have COVID again. So.
Bummer.
Yeah.
It's the.
Yes.
I just found that out.
Well, there was one. It was.
Talked to Mike today.
But, um, into a non-conforming. Would you?
They would.
That would.
They, because now all we do is sign and send it back to them because we don't do much.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Is, uh, did you look for these online?
Well, I know.
Unsolved issues, reading online things.
The record.
That's why I always keep asking for great notes.
Perfection.
My optometrist and my ophthalmologist have suggested less reading online.
Yeah, like, okay, something else.
But I'm just assuming that there were things that were. Signed off on.
Yeah.
Previous news.
We approved them at the last, uh, Washington. In the sense of setting the hearing for tonight. Moving forward.
But everything that was on it, we had various times had.
Yes, and, and.
They asked Scott to write them up that way.
That's right.
He's sending out copies of the agenda there, too.
Hey, Joe.
Hey, how's it going, seeing you?
Well, we're between meetings. Yeah, we finished the organizational meeting and adjourned it, um. Yeah, once we opened the meeting, we'll have a few minutes, uh, and then we have the hearing scheduled to start at seven forty-five. I think the hearing will not take us very long, uh, because it's, it's the, uh, the, the documents are the, um, that we're dealing with are the changes that we're proposing in the zoning resolution.
Okay.
And we've already gone through everything and I, I don't anticipate that there's going to be any changes that will need to be made again, but we still need to go through the process.
I think we've made plenty of changes.
I wish I could have it in my bag or not.
New year. The original concept plan was in twenty-two. And then we went from that one. The, yeah, the RCD.
And I didn't bring that with me.
Oh, I'm glad we didn't do this. We air shorten your timeframe for the organizational meeting next year and just schedule it for seven fifteen. There's not much to do other than what we did tonight, right?
Right.
Just.
Yeah, we actually signed off at, at seven eighteen, I think it was. But, yeah, we could, we could start it at, you know, seven ten or something and instead of seven.
Yeah.
I think, I think DG would have appreciated the extra time to run stuff off anyway.
But she needs it tonight, yeah. I'm not sure.
No, hopefully.
I mean.
She has that now and she can scan it in and have a, a digital copy of that organizational meeting.
Oh, I would.
Yes, well.
Maybe what company call?
He is eligible for a company lease, a third of a price of a non-company lease. But it's just entry level right now, so it's just significantly. Or like balances better.
What's up on the website? I don't know if you look, but.
But it was sort of all consumed.
These are, uh, not someone's that are up on the website, so.
Okay.
Well, she's running off, should. Should be the same as what's, what's on the. Because these are the ones that I sent to.
Wasn't happy.
Sent to you electronically, but I checked.
Issues.
Didn't go through every word, but I did check to see and they have the same dates on the top.
Oh, yeah, I, I trust Scott to have done a very thorough job.
And I, I looked for my notes. I looked for the changes that we had discussed and they were bad.
And when they sort of.
Yeah, so far I think Scott's been very good at getting those changes right.
Right.
Here you are.
Maybe, I realize that kind of crazy stuff, too.
We'll learn something.
It's been, been an interesting year. No, we can't do that.
I mean, yeah, we can't learn any.
Yes.
I'm saying right now, he basically does.
He's a sign-in chief and there's a copy of the agenda.
Are you applying to get a permit for something?
No, I was just curious. I, I, I was curious about that non-conforming lot split situation I brought up with.
Gets to do three days.
Oh.
Um.
Only two days.
I was just wondering if Mike knew anything about it because I was reading that lot splits have to be approved by the zoning inspector. We have to be signed off on. So I'm like, well, at that point, it wasn't Mike. Whoever it was, sign, sign off on a non-conforming lot split. That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, so he's in green going. Never had it.
Anyway.
There, there were several obviously preceded, like, the last one was John Trader.
Yeah.
No, the last one was, uh, Kurt.
A definite.
Matt Kurt.
Kurt, Matt Kurt.
One didn't.
Sorry.
And, and there was somebody. John was at least four hills.
So he's, he's out there.
Or is it somebody else though between John and you can't?
My dad's not quiet when he's out. They have to take turns.
That's a timber.
Works out pretty well, yeah.
I think someone did hold it on an interim.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause Stranger's been out of the country for years, years.
Yeah, I think, I, well, I think what was happening is that what was supposed to be happening is that, yes.
Yeah, we've got a list of projects for it to complete, so we gotta have, keep the shop.
Dale before we repair. I think it was.
Yeah.
What you got there?
Thirty-one.
Got our secretaries on here.
Oh.
Yeah.
Now we.
It was her secretary.
She's bringing in the documents that we need, um. Well, um, I'm going to go ahead and call the, uh, regular meeting of the, uh, Township Zoning Commission to order and I'll call the role um, for members present. Mike Kavler here. Tom Needs.
Here.
Jenny Lewis.
Here.
Joni Manson.
Here.
Brittany Hopler.
Here.
Okay.
Bob Singer's trying to get.
We are officially in session, Danielle. Um, yeah, and with that, um.
Can you see if Bob Singer's trying to get in?
Yeah.
Looks like there's somebody looking to be admitted.
I, Bob Singer would be the likely candidate.
Yeah, that is who it is.
He seems to, uh, join most of our meetings because, um, if he can't be present. Um, and of course I introduce the director of, uh, zoning, Mike Cannon. We have another, uh, official present, uh, Bruce McCleary. Bruce is a member of the Township Strategic, uh, Planning Committee. And then members of the public, um. Well, the way that the meeting will be conducted is that we would ask that you simply, uh, respect, uh, the communications that other individuals present will want to share and listen. Don't talk over them. And if you, uh, do need to, uh, make a comment, we would ask that you do go to one of the microphones. Use one that is seat, uh, on the table here with two empty chairs behind it. So Joe, you could use that one later if you'd like, or the microphone up by the, uh, podium. Um, that way anyone who is participating will be able to hear you clearly. And at this point then, um, before we go forward, we will take a short time for, uh, a question from the public, cause sometimes the question can be answered quickly. So.
Yeah.
So do you guys?
Yeah.
But what's your question? If, if it's a, yes, go to the microphone. Uh, this, as I said, it's a short period of time, so if it's a quick question.
It's just, I have, uh.
Or we'll let you know.
Okay, that's fine.
And then we'll, we'll have the time for it.
I have a property on six oh five, just north of here. And we were grandfathered in to run a business out of there. And with all the development that's coming up this way, um, to protect the fact of running a business still out of there, what it would take to maybe make that commercial or I don't, you know, I don't know how to protect that I can continue to run a business, I guess. If, if like a, like a housing development comes in and has a problem with it, I don't know that the grandfathered in portion is going to protect me, I guess.
Is the address?
Uh, twenty-six, twenty-three.
By truck wheels.
Mm-hmm.
It's the big white barn on the east side of six oh five. That was a refuse hauling.
I mean, I think that's what they were doing when we bought it, but, uh, it got grandfathered in as a auto mechanic. And since we're still doing automotive, um, industry, I guess.
All I can say is that if it was a non-conforming use, uh, prior to the onset of zoning.
Huh, I believe that's what it was.
That use can continue.
Okay.
Um, until such time as the zoning would change. Now, if you want to do something, uh, in terms of, quote, making yourselves, um, conforming, then you would have to apply for a zoning change.
Okay.
And at this point, it would seem like probably, uh, the one option would be the, uh, a P C D, I guess.
Yep.
Plan commercial development.
What if, what if the parcel has like a conditional use permit on it, does that?
Well, I don't know. He said it was non-conforming, didn't you?
I believe it's non, I mean, it was, yeah, non-conforming, I believe is what.
Well, if you have a, if, if you have a conditional use, that is something that the, the board of zoning appeals would have approved.
Yeah.
We did go, we did go through the zoning appeals and, um, our neighbor.
Somewhere of all the non.
Um, um, Keith Campbell said, you know, this is definitely, uh, you know.
Well, but it, it would be in writing somewhere if they, if it's a reflection in their minutes that it would be approved as.
This was probably two thousand seventeen.
If it's already approved as a conditional use.
Okay.
Then whatever the conditions were that the B Z A set, those would continue to apply.
Okay.
And I don't know in this case, uh, of course.
I, I think my concern is it's, it was grandfathered in because it was a automotive repair shop. And we are in automotive space. We're not, we're not necessarily an automotive repair shop still.
Do you do retail out of the?
Uh, it's mainly online.
Um.
But we have employees there and.
As I said, then it would be, one way would to go would be to consider applying for a planned commercial development.
Okay.
More comfortable with that. But find out first if it's already approved with a conditional use permit.
Okay.
And in which case then that conditional use permit would continue to be valid for you as long as you own the property.
Okay.
Most of the time, if you sell the property, the conditional use would end.
Okay.
But the board of zoning appeals could approve it to run with the property so that it would go with the sale. I don't know what they approved if B Z A acted on it.
Not sure.
So that, there should be something in the file, Mike.
Yeah, we can look and see if you have anything under your address in the file. Did you say you guys came in for a conditional use?
We, um, we came in, there was a, the zoning, um, director came in and said, you know, just come in for a meeting, we need to know what you're doing here, kind of thing. And so they had the B Z A, I guess, rule on it.
And did you fill out any application?
I didn't fill out any application or any paperwork.
Sounds to me like they just found out what you guys were doing and didn't act on it. So you probably have nothing in paper. But your concern is that you, you, your business is grandfathered in and if somebody comes in around you and puts a house in development, that can cause issues for you because you are not in a commercial area.
That is my, yeah, that's my concern.
Question is, as you guys have answered, what do you feel he needs to do to protect himself? And I agree with you, not that it matters, it doesn't matter what I agree with, but it's, uh, sounds like a, a perfect opportunity for a planned commercial district.
Yeah.
Okay.
So find out about the.
Okay.
Conditional use.
I didn't see anything off the top of my quick search in this list, but I'm not going to promise.
How hard is that though? Mine doesn't go with. I think it ended.
Twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay.
So I didn't, I didn't see anything in the more recent years, but.
I mean, this was in two thousand seventeen or.
Yeah, I didn't see anything.
Eighteen. So it would have been a while ago.
It should have been on there.
Yeah.
If it was approved as a conditional use, it should be on that list that she was looking at.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't see it during those years. I haven't gone all the way back, cause like they said.
We didn't fill out any paperwork, we were just directed to come.
And so if the previous owners had done a conditional use permit that went with the parcel as opposed to stopping when the parcel was so, sold, it could be in here potentially even further back.
Okay.
But I, I mean, it's. Yeah, I don't, do you know the name of the previous owner?
Uh, the, the guy who owned it before, I'm not even sure he's the one that had the automotive shop. His name, I, from the mail I've gotten at the address is Frank Whitehead. But I don't, but he wasn't even, I think he lived in Florida or something.
Yeah. And so like I said, it might be in here, but I don't see anything.
You've got addresses there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
What was the address again?
Twenty-six, uh, twenty-three.
State Route.
State Route six, yeah, South State Route six oh five.
Um, I think, not knowing all the details yet, but you, you probably are safer, uh, getting, getting it rezoned to.
Okay.
Plan to commercial district.
Okay.
Is one, um, charter.
I mean, that's, yeah, I, I'm happy to do it. I just, I, you know, I want to, I, I don't want someday someone to knock on the door and say.
You, you gotta.
Get out, yeah, and I gotta, you know, figure something else out.
They'd be knocking on your door and then they would be knocking on you to say that you're operating a business and violating.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, that's who owned it before. Or I think, I know Keith Campbell's father owned it maybe.
Conditional use granted here?
Well.
Might be you guys zoning commission, H T Z?
Two thousand.
All the way back to two thousand.
I thought you were still here then, Mike.
Yeah, I wasn't. Sue might remember.
Yeah. She's currently putting my children to bed, so I can't bugger right now.
This is.
And you said this was two thousand, there's nothing in the variance list from two thousand that matches.
This is a, uh, B Z A, this is, uh, zoning commission.
So was it zoned commercial?
No, it's, it was a rezone from A R to F R.
Ah.
That's the rezoning.
There's nothing about commercial at all.
No, there's nothing in here.
We only have two acres, I believe.
Okay.
This would just be change of zoning from A R one to F R one.
Okay.
And that was approved back in two thousand.
Yeah, okay.
The F R is a two acre parcel, A R is five acre parcel.
Okay.
So you're trying to bring the parcel.
I think Tom is, uh, we, we bought it on sixteen. Best route for you to consider to be safer.
Yeah.
Is to consider applying for a.
Okay.
Commercial development.
Okay. And I do that through this gentleman, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the forms are, um, the forms are online.
Okay. I can do that.
All right.
Uh, what did he say, P R C?
P C D.
C D.
A P C D, yeah.
Plan commercial development.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I can tell you where the forms and everything.
Okay.
Any questions you have?
Okay, that's all I need then.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And with that, we're approaching the time for the hearing, but, uh, we still have a couple more minutes. Um, we don't have, and Danielle stepped out here again. I was gonna verify with her, but, uh, we haven't seen copies of minutes. So unless she's running them off now, uh, but we don't necessarily have to approve them tonight. Um, if she does run them off, or she's coming back. Did you, um, run off the minutes or were you planning to?
I have the minutes for the regular meeting and the hearing, I do not have workshop minutes.
Okay, well, I think, uh, unless there's a, a member that wants to plan on doing it tonight, what we'll do is we'll take the copies that you've run off, but plan to take action on at the, at a future meeting, either on the twenty-second or February the fifth, rather than.
At the very least then, I do need you to read just the hearing minutes so the trustees have that for approval.
Okay.
That's the only one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, I need that one for approval as soon as possible. So if we could do that tonight, um, those are done.
Oh, that's right, cause those haven't been approved yet either.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we do need to approve those.
Mm-hmm.
That was on December the fourth.
Yes, and there is, yeah, there's a hearing that's going to the trustees.
Okay, well then go ahead and passes out a copy of that, that'll be the only one that we'll deal with tonight.
Okay.
Can you also send the other one electronically so we can do that?
Yeah, and then you can send December the eleventh and the.
Yes, that's the same time.
Yes, to us electronically.
Oh, it is, I had COVID and I was, and was behind on everything. I had COVID the week of Christmas and behind on everything.
And I understand you had a bout of COVID to deal with too.
Yes, it was. It's the greatest Christmas present I've ever seen.
It was Neela.
Not a great Christmas present.
Yeah, I had it and Ida had it. I didn't test Alba ever, but I'm assuming she's probably who brought it home to us. But I really had minimal symptoms, I was pleased.
Oh, no, it hit me like truck.
Yeah, see, the exhaustion was the worst part for me, but I'm also eight months pregnant. So that's just the state of being for me at this point, so.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, and next month, I might not be here.
Okay, it's, uh, seven forty-six, so, uh, at this point we'll recess regular meeting and plan to bring, come back into session following the hearing. And we will, uh, move forward to open the hearing on, uh, application H T Z C twenty-four oh one. Uh, with that, opening the hearing, uh, Danielle, uh, do you call the roll?
Correct, Mike Cabler.
Hi, here.
All right, Jenny Manson.
Here.
Tom Need.
Here.
Virginia List.
Here.
Brittany Hobart.
Here.
Hey, um, well, we have a hearing tonight. And the hearing is on H D Z C, um, twenty-four oh one. What we're dealing with are, uh, four changes, four articles, I should say, with changes to the zoning resolution. And we will work our way through each of those. Um, does everybody, did?
I do not have a current copy of it.
All right, who needs current copies?
Articles, uh, we'll go through each article one at a time. So the first one is article nine. Low-density residential district.
All right.
Thank you.
Or two.
Thanks.
There are no changes that I'm aware that, that, that were made in this since we last reviewed it on, uh, December the eleventh. So unless there was something that, uh, got overlooked before, um, this copy should be familiar to you.
Yeah, I think, I think we can go ahead and approve them. I think we've looked at them enough.
Yeah, and he's got the table in the back there.
Okay, well, we can have, uh, move this one. We don't, I'm not suggesting that we approve them each individually. They will. This one, I just, we'll go ahead and set it to the side that it looks, it will be in the, in the group to be approved.
Okay.
Um, that way we can take one motion and approve.
Yeah.
All of them at the same time. Article eleven, was there any issues with that one?
Don't have it.
Thank you.
Okay, got your hand.
I think the same is probably true for that. I think we've looked through all of these enough that we can say they're good.
Yeah, and this one now, you'll notice the date at the top is twelve eleven, so it's reflecting, um.
The workshop.
The meeting, yeah, the workshop meeting that we had on the eleven. These are the copies that are posted online.
Interestingly, um, article eleven appears to have article nine attached with.
That might just be a stapling error.
Oh, okay.
I don't have article nine.
Okay. Stapling here.
I was missing an article nine, I think I found it.
I believe I have it here.
Okay. So you think article eleven is, um, as you expected to be at this point?
Um, I would just point out that is also, my copy of it includes articles, um, twenty-three, uh, which is the procedure in zoning.
Oh, I have the procedures. Those were, um, split out as to, those were split out to a separate document.
It's the extra article.
Thank you.
All right, so let's, let's, let's be clear about what we're doing with article eleven. Is it acceptable at this point? Anybody have any issues with article eleven?
No.
No. Right. And do you want to jump to three cents? I think that's the one you just handed out there.
That was the one that's handed out, that was moved from article eleven.
Okay, same thing on article twenty-three, folks. Do you have any issues that you wanted to bring up relating to that one? And it reflects the input that we made and, um, what we were satisfied with on, at our meeting on, uh, December the eleventh. If there are no issues with, uh, article twenty-three, then we'll put that one in the, to the side and ask about article thirteen. Plan residential conservation.
Thank you. Thank you. Looks like we it has everything we talked about in December.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And I guess we're ready to move on to Article thirteen.
It does still have, we have one cross out in it.
Oh, I did see that too, that needed to be fixed, what page was that on, because I forgot.
Page eight it says. Page two.
It's page eight.
Page eight, H two, right about in the middle of the page.
Now we'll have.
That's there, it's because we we changed, we're no longer having initials and finals, and it's just an approved development plan.
Yeah, it's a strikeout of final, that's that's. But. The final document should have had that taken out.
Mm hmm.
That's what we approved on when we met on uh. December the eleventh.
Well, I say we still prove it anyway, and we can put that as a.
Yeah, it's just a matter of uh.
Removing the cross out.
Yeah.
Because he's already got it crossed out.
Yeah, that's not a big.
Having him accept that change, apparently, for some ha- some reason, that didn't happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I noticed that, and I forgot to mark it. All right. So then the last uh are the two new sections that we were adding to the development standards, twenty one sixteen and twenty one seventeen. And again. Um. This reflects what we decided upon uh at our meeting on December the eleventh. Is there anything on this?
Thank you.
Uh copies that anyone needs to bring to our attention for discussion? Okay. Well, this time then, um members of the commission. I will open it to public comment, and that would mean anyone who's put it here tonight or anyone that has uh.
I have one question, in my notes, wh- when we accepted the these items, articles from Scott, I I noted. That um we accepted Article thirteen from Scott with changes to Articles thirty two and thirty three? Do we know what the board done for?
Article thirteen, I think it was a reference. That was correct in thirteen.
Yeah.
And it had to be. Um. That was the change.
Oh.
Yes.
Because it's making reference to the uh. Procedures.
Okay.
And it was it was citing the wrong one.
Yeah.
And he, that was the correction that was being made.
Should it be third Article thirty two or thirty three?
Well, it should be.
Should be thirty three, I think.
Are you sure?
I got I got the arrow from thirty two to thirty three, so that usually is my shorthand for. Changing thirty two to thirty three.
No, it should be thirty two.
Be thirty two noted. In here, in the. First paragraph, but I don't know if that should.
Yeah, because thirty three is the clustered residential conservation.
Okay.
And the procedures that we're following are procedures for conservation subdivision standards.
Thirty two.
So it should be thirty two, is that what it says?
Yeah.
All right, that then it's correct. Okay. Uh at this point then, I would open it up for the process, in the process of saying that that was going to go to the public, but uh. Is there any member of the public that wishes to ask a question or offer a comment about any one of these five? Articles that we are considering for modification?
I'd just like to thank all of you for all the work you put in.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Rob. Happy New Year.
And Happy New Year to all of you.
All right, if there's no further comment from the public, then um giving you an opportunity for that. Hearing none. And we'll close the public comment portion and come back to the commission uh with regard to action on. Um application HTZ C twenty four oh one.
Hmm, I don't know that our our cheat sheet usually really. Applies as much to this. But Mr. Chairman, inasmuch as application HTZ C twenty four dash zero one. Uh conforms to the intent. Of the township, from township comprehensive plan and appears to meet applicable aspects of the Harlem Township zoning resolution. A move that the Harlem Township Zoning Commission recommend to the Harlem Township Board of Trustees said the application be approved?
Second.
All right, moved by Johnny, seconded by Virginia, that application um. Twenty four oh one uh be approved.
Oh, okay.
Want to make.
It's a recommendation to the trustees for adoption.
Additional on removing that crop breakout. Feel like even if that strikeout makes it into the final copy, it's got to strike out it, and so we know it doesn't matter. But, I mean.
Do you want us to, do you want to amend this?
That typo. Will be corrected in uh document before it would be printed.
Before it goes into our our no our books.
Okay.
Because you see, it doesn't. It doesn't have the the correct formatting with the page.
Uh so we have a motion and a second. Um. To approve. Uh application HTZ C twenty four oh one. Uh for adoption of. A recommendation for adoption to the Board of Trustees of Article changes in Article nine, Article eleven, Article thirteen. Uh. And it's um Article uh twenty three.
And section twenty one.
And section uh sixteen and seventeen of uh Article twenty.
Uh section, but yes.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, uh Danielle, would you call the roll, please?
All right, Mike Kavler.
Hi.
Uh Virginia List.
I.
Johnny Manson.
Hi.
Tony.
Hi.
Brittany Hubbard.
Hi.
Okay. Motion carries, um so. That concludes um. The need for discussion on. They in the hearing for application twenty four oh one, um. Did you have? Prepare one of these forms by chance for us to sign?
Yes.
Um if you want to go ahead and. Pass that around so we can get our signatures on it, that will accompany the document as it goes forward to the trustees.
Do we even sign it here?
Yeah, just sign next year.
Next year.
There you go. But that concludes the hearing, I would um. I can have a motion to. Adjourn the hearing, conclude the hearing.
I make a motion to conclude hearing uh HTZ C twenty four oh one.
And the second.
Second.
Second by Virginia. All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, okay, so our hearing is now closed, and we will uh reconvene. The regular meeting of the trust of the zoning commission. Okay. And then back to our agenda. Uh we don't, we do have uh minutes, one set of minutes that we want to deal with, and this came from the hearing, I forgot about. Uh they were, it's not listed specifically on here as review of minutes, we had the regular meeting, the workshop meeting. Which we are not going to deal with tonight, but we do want to deal with the zoning commission. Hearing minutes on the Wazlowski, December the fourth uh hearing that was held.
I have some corrections.
Yeah, give me two.
A few. In the first sentence, after words submitted, I added the word by. Submitted by.
Mm hmm.
Down under application review and public comments, Clase. We need to change the spelling in three places.
Yep. Also, under application review, the first paragraph, third line down. But a minor typo was found. Which listed the parcel size, I would insert which.
Also in that paragraph, um. Where it says, Mr. Kavler read the Regional Planning Commission's recommendation of approval based on the comprehensive plan, I might adjust that and say. Recommended recommendation of approval based on being supported by the comprehensive plan. Because that's the wording that they used in the recommendation.
What was that again?
Um uh based on being supported by the comprehensive plan.
So we're uh dropping word based.
So it's you, based based on is still in there.
Mm hmm. Yeah, yeah, based on being supported by the comprehensive plan.
Based on the comprehensive plan, and so word being supported being inserted.
After on.
Based on. Being supported by.
On being supported by.
You can reword it if you want, but it says, the request is supported by the plan. That's literally what they said.
It's.
Okay.
Got it, dude. So it reads um. Mr. Kavler read the Regional Planning Commission's recommendation of approval based on being supported by the comprehensive.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Okay.
And in the next paragraph, uh Mr. Clase. Spells his name C L A S E.
Yeah, I have no idea why it picked out as a guy.
I said yes, C L A, yeah.
Yeah, do you see it, it's in three places there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Listen, the public president spoke.
Yeah, yeah, so I have no idea what. I hate my software.
Yeah. It has its own sentries.
That's all it is.
Every place that uh. Mr. Clay's name appears, make sure that the cor- the spelling is changed. So that it is correct. Motion and adjourn. That paragraph, any questions or any changes in that paragraph?
May I make a motion that we approve the. Hearing minutes for HTZ C twenty three oh nine from December fourth as corrected?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Uh to approve the minutes for December the fourth. Hearing uh on HTZ C twenty three oh nine. Any further discussion? Hearing none, and all in favor, uh well, no, we should, yeah, in this case, all in favor, as we're voting on the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Right.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. As corrected, minutes are approved as corrected. Yeah, now the rest of the minutes, uh Danielle, if you would.
For the workshop, yes.
Yeah.
Just get those to us then uh electronically.
Yes.
Do you actually have any printed out?
I do.
I would like this.
Well, if you have them printed, you can go ahead and distribute them, Johnny likes to have them in print.
Yep.
I might make changes to the online version, so just keep an eye on that.
Okay.
Anybody else wants a print version?
I'll take a print.
I want to see it online. I'll look at it online, any corrections I have, I'll send them to you. And then uh that way, if there are any changes, you can make those before um our next meeting. I think I will plan to have these minutes. Um on the agenda when we meet on the uh.
Twenty second.
Yeah, we can do them on the twenty second, I hope. Okay. Uh moving forward, uh Joe, under old business. Coming to you now. Um.
I brought it uh born, because I didn't uh I didn't email to you ahead of time, so I can prop it up, but um I did burn a few pounds. You can say you won't.
Okay, well, I've. That's good, this, what you've got are uh changes in the conceptual plan or what you're planning to make, well, you can walk us through it, just.
Yeah, sure, I'll walk you through it before I give it to you, that way it makes sense. I'll present that.
No, thanks.
It, if the button is up, it's on, yes.
I'm on my back to you guys. That's all right. I'll tell you what, I'll stand here, I'm gonna illustrate, and then I'm gonna give you a copy of it so you can see, so um. We're talking about the uh conservancy at Duncan Run, one of the changes that uh I'm highlighting tonight is. Uh we previously called the project the Estates at Duncan Run. And we're looking to call it the Conservancy at Duncan Run more out of respect to the conservation development that it's evolved into. Um the Dunk, uh Estates at Duncan Run started when we had two acre lots, and it was proposed a much different character than what's being proposed today, so um wanted to pass that on. Uh so that's first first item of change, um is going through the engineering process, I'm gonna kind of talk it through from the road at Harlem Road. Uh back through the project. Uh we had some modifications uh that were requested by the county engineer and some of the other review parties, and uh I'm presenting them to you uh tonight as a modification of the PRCD. Uh but as I reviewed it, uh really nothing in the text. Uh is changing, so we're not changing the verbiage uh in the conditions of what were approved, uh it's really the the site plan itself, so. Originally, we had a uh street stub uh shown in here, but halfway halfway back in the project. Uh that stub was originally discussed with the county engineer's office. Uh as a potential connection, but uh because of the drainage course in the back, we and the ability to uh not have to physically improve the rest of the roadway. To a collector status, we envisioned that connector being better uh with the idea that it wouldn't promote cut through traffic in this project. Uh after some discussions with the county engineer. Uh and regional planning, it was agreed that uh that stub, if moved to the east, could also provide a potential access to the property further uh further east from the site. Not one that has to get constructed with this project, uh but because of the open space and the dedication in that area. Uh something that the county engineer wanted to try to preserve, so um they did ask for the street stub to be extended to the east, so it got um further back into the project.
That would be going under the existing power lines.
Uh the power lines are back here, so that stub would connect through the power lines uh if it. Uh, the power lines are back here, so that stub would connect through the power lines, uh, if it decided, yeah, that it would needed to be utilized in the future. I think it's more of a guarantee that it would continue to the south, but to the east is probably questionable, a lot of it would depend on how this property develops in the future. So naturally, they asked for that, uh, turnaround to be a potential connection that we could be upgraded in the future to provide access. Uh, maybe something that they come back to you and say they want to do a, a small private drive or something like that, but those are things that could be discussed and negotiated in the future. Um, easement would probably be requested with the plat. Uh, but I don't believe we want to grant it with the plat if, if possible, so we're trying to discuss that with county engineer right now. Um, part of the, uh, negotiation is a lot of roadway that's been constructed and he's trying to sell lots adjacent to that future easement. So we want to have some say in what it looks like in the future, if, if it gets turned over, the homeowners association have the homeowners have some say. So probably work with the engineer's office to at least require signature of the homeowners association here, as well as obviously your guys' approval, um, as it proceeds in development for anything further east, um, not knowing who the developer of that would be in the future, so. If it ever did get extended, it's something that can be discussed.
So if the, the stub was extended, would that affect the percentage of undeveloped land that you have? Versus developed lands?
Uh, it would take right away, uh, in the future potentially, if that did continue, correct? Cause it's considered part of the open space today.
Right, and would you still have the corrective, uh, percentage of open space compared to developed space? If you no longer have that, as.
I think it would have to be an amendment at that time, um, but I do not believe it would tr- still trigger the fifty percent. Uh, there'd probably have to be some offsets somewhere else for that.
The number of lots remained the same, correct?
Correct. Yeah, so we're not proposing that easement as part of this project specifically for that reason, we'll let you know if it continues that way. Uh, that the county engineer requires it to be an easement or something that's more guaranteed, but it's something that they want as a potential discussion item in the future with township. And with the, uh, property or the homeowners association if they ever decided to connect.
And access to the parcels closer to the road is off. Not a road or a driveway?
Correct, uh, so this, uh, has been proposed as a common access drive. Um, that was part of the negotiation with the county engineer's office was, uh, in exchange for the potential upgrades to, to make this road wider. Uh, that they would not require a public road, uh, for that portion.
That is sort of in the area where the, um, what was going to be a stub street, it's kind of in that same general area, right?
It's right on top of it, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I, I'm looking, trying to look at the map here, that's what I.
So we actually gained a little bit of open space by pulling that back, so, uh, the numbers I give you, we actually gained about three tenths of an acre, uh, removing that right away, potential stub, uh, in that area. And I can take a look at it, but I believe this area is going, potentially if they had to do a sixty foot would be a little bit more than that, but, um, yeah. It's essentially a saved back about a hundred foot, uh, by sixty foot area there.
So, open space area behind those lots then that come off of that street that's going to be the stub back there now. Mm hmm. That is, was in the area where there was, um, a large open space, uh, and kind of a collection pond or.
Correct.
Whatever you were going to use.
Yeah, there's still a pond shown here, um, that, that was, gets to the nature of the last revision that we had, so the road configuration itself would have been part of the revision, but. In, uh, nega- renegotiating the roadway, figuring out where water flows, we had previously had a basin up in this area on the northwest corner of the site.
Yeah.
Um, that basin was to feed into this basin that would then feed into the floodplain, uh, or discharge into the floodplain area. Um, it's my understanding that this basin was determined that it wasn't needed, uh, that there was adequate area here to hold water. Uh, and the rest of it would just actually already heading to the southwest corner, so the southwest basin got a little bit larger, this basin got removed. And then the other two, um, I'd say basin, but, uh, we'll talk about the wetland design, but, um, they, they were able to be designed to handle.
It's not a basin, but there is open space behind those lots down there. Where you were ta- you were talking about the.
Up here?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, so.
Not a basin, but it's open space.
Correct, it'll still be, uh, required, um, green space, it just won't be needed for the stormwater areas.
Yeah.
So, um, that area we're proposing in the amendment to be reforested, uh, as part of the continuation of the reforestation that would be occurring in the front. So we would just continue that or the prairie style development around the corner, uh, to be in behind these lots as well. So it'd be similar character, just not a wet one. So, uh, those are the changes that we have, again, nothing in the nature of the text. Um, it's still evolving, so I'm presenting it to you, so I want to keep you informed, but if you tell me, hey, go away and come back in a month, that's fine. Um, what I, what we're gonna have to do is Grand Test Mike to sign or give us an email acknowledging that the engineering plans are in conformance with the PRC development plan. And what we wanted to avoid was waiting till the last minute to have that conversation. So, uh, ultimately, the engineer's office will be asking for some confirmation from the township that you guys are okay with the plan as presented.
Should that acknowledgement be very specific as far as what you just told us, or just kind of?
Very broad, very broad, yeah, we still have to work with you guys on compliance in the plan, so we'll be doing a walkthrough with you to make sure everything's fine, but, uh, the county engineer is really just looking to say, uh, ha- have you seen the plans, are they okay, so, uh, we have a updated plan set that's gonna be coming out, it's, I think thirty six pages long, so we're gonna be passing that on, uh, to keep everybody in the loop, but, um, as that plan set comes out, these four change, they, we're essentially highlighting the highlights of it, but not the details, it's all. Cross sections of the roadway and ditching and stormwater and all the stuff that you guys probably don't want to get into, but kind of wanted to hit on at least the nature of some of the comments that came out.
The, the trail that circulated around the perimeter and then cut through, I, I thought it cut through on that road that's miserable, that's turned into a common access.
Yeah, it cuts in behind it, um, yeah, instead of cutting the cross section there, it'll actually stay in the open space area now, which is probably safer.
Route where the, I assume the, can't see from here, but the, the post office, the, the mailboxes are up somewhere on the road.
Yeah, so that's one of the other highlights in that change, so, um, up, they actually got moved to the front of the project, the request of the post office, um, they'd like to see less, uh, they didn't want them further back, so. They moved the, uh, cluster mailbox to the entry here, uh, and it's where the road's wider too, so it's, uh.
Is that gonna take away some of that reforested buffer though, to have like a mail?
It's at the edge of the right away, so like a ten by ten box, but it, it wouldn't necessarily eat into that.
Me object. We have to say no to the post office.
I can take it back, um, we just had that issue on the Harlem Estates project where, uh, post office wanted it in a specific location and the engineers, they, they, their comments clashed, so. We try to make as many people happy as we can in the process, so if you guys are pushing for, I think the original location was in here where it makes a lot more sense, I can definitely pass it on to the engineers.
I just think you're gonna cause congestion at the end of the, the street getting onto Harlem, which is not a place you want congestion in my opinion, because people go way above the speed limit on Harlem.
Yeah.
And part of the whole point of that reforestation buffer across the front was to make it so you just saw basically a driveway that disappeared into the woods and then it happened to be a development. And if you have a big set of mailboxes out front, it does not look like that as much.
That's a good point, that's a good.
So if we can convince them to put it back further, I think that makes more sense, I also think just, like, if you're wanting the residents to walk to the mailbox, having it at a more central location makes a lot more sense than having it down at the end of the street.
Yeah, I would agree.
Oh, I hundred percent agree with that, the, uh.
And there's less chance that you get porch pirates taking stuff out of the mailboxes.
Yeah.
If it's further into the development.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know enough to answer the, my, the question that I have, which is, can the post office literally require that?
They can, unfortunately, but, um, they're open to comments, it's an, it's a discussion with the postmaster, so we, we can work with the postmaster to understand what their. Feedback and concerns might be, uh, we had pretty extensive, I think we had like seven or eight meetings on the one on Harlem Estates, because it wasn't approved as a part of a planned district. Uh, we had to go through all sorts of negotiation, we tried to put it in the middle of the cul-de-sac. Uh, the post office loved the idea, the county engineer hated the idea, um, so I, it's a, it's a continual discussion until we.
The post office just wants to be able to turn around and get out of there again.
Yeah, they actually get paid by the mile too, um, so the challenge is if they're doing it every day and it goes further into the project, from what I understand, that. Um, they, they pay more to their postal drivers for that.
I mean, are they helping them out by doing the box in the first place?
Yeah, the box is a requirement, so they don't allow new developments anymore, um, they're lock boxes, so I don't know if you, we have, I think the one in Harlem Estates got installed, right? So it's, it's in there, so, uh, it's essentially a pedestal and then they're lockable boxes, they go to the back of it to deliver the mail and then the fronts where the residents can get in and get access to their mail, but. It, um, this one will be a little bit bigger than that one, because they're all based on number of boxes.
Yeah, even more reason to move it further back in, because if that mail truck is sitting there to do twenty five houses worth of mail, they're.
Well, so they were, they required a widening at the road for three lanes, and I think that's part of why they pushed for it to be relocated up there, was because they had a three lane cross section at the entrance. Um, so there is an actual pull off, um, area there, pull off or a widened area.
So how many, how many hundreds of miles are we looking at from the entrance to?
I was curious. Well, when you have to do it, three hundred and sixty five days a year, the, the eighth of a mile.
It would be busting a ton for a mile, probably.
Yeah, the, the whole road's, uh, twenty, twenty three hundred feet, so, uh, you're probably about half of that, so it's not horrible to, to think that we could, uh, try to push back on it and try to get it back there, so.
Maybe a quarter mile.
Yeah, something less than a quarter mile, right around that, around two tenths of a mile daily.
Yep.
I'm just, uh.
In and out, so that, you know, forced into a mile.
Yeah.
I still think that I feel like it's worth at least half a year to do that.
My taxes.
Yeah.
Paying for this mail person anyway.
What is the IRS give us for mileage, fifty six and a half cents a mile?
I, I think so, yes, oh, yeah.
In the math.
Yeah, sorry, it's pennies, yeah. So, uh, I'll say, uh, the, the other aspect is, um, uh, the, the, there's a lot of conversations that came around the entryway, so. Uh, we were requested to do a ditch setback, um, that's currently in the design phase, it's my understanding a ditch setback's gonna involve relocation of utilities. Pushing the ditch further away from the, the side edge of the road, um, I have had townships push back on ditch setbacks, um, it's your right to ask the county to reconsider that. Uh, it does come at a cost to developer, the cost that we are gonna see is, uh, that area is supposed to be used for reforestation. We're gonna be pushing a ditch back into the area that we, uh, we hope to preserve for, uh, for some of that, so. Um, don't know if you have any thoughts on the ditch setback itself, um, the edge of the, it, it's something if the road were ever widened, it would be required, and I think the county looks as an opportunity to require the developers to do that, so. It doesn't involve additional right away, but it may involve, uh, some section of grading into the open space. Uh, that obviously would limit some of our reforestation areas, so I think we're talking probably five to ten feet, nothing major, uh, within the additional right away. Uh, it's already forty foot from center, so there's gonna be a pretty substantial, uh, area that's preserved, um, within the existing road right away. My guess is it'll probably be about fifty foot from center, that would be before you see trees or any type of, uh, um, any type of forestation there.
And how much space do you actually have there?
Uh, we had a hundred foot setback to the first, to the property line, so that'll limit us to about fifty foot left for reforestation. And I think we were planning on at least sixty, sixty feet there outside of the right away.
That setback doesn't align with anything else on the road.
Correct. Yeah, the, right now, everything's thirty foot, uh, thirty foot from center, sixty foot right away, the third plan asked for the eighty foot, so I don't think we can get away with anything different than the forty foot from center. But I do think the ditch setback itself is probably a negotiable standpoint that we could talk more with the county engineer about it. We've had more luck negotiating where there was pre-existing woodland, but if we approached them and said our goal here was to plant trees, they might actually hate that more, but. The idea is they're trying to push the ditch lines back, so, um, once we get grading, I'll have a better idea of what the impact of that is, but right now, I'm understanding it's probably about a fifty foot from center. Uh, to get to the backside of the ditch where we would reasonably be able to start planting vegetation.
So you're saying instead of a hundred foot wide replanting, we're gonna have fifty foot?
Yeah, so a hundred foot did include the right away, so it was about forty foot, so I think it was instead of sixty, we'll probably end up with about fifty, so it's, that's like I said, it's about a ten foot negotiation.
Ninety total now, as opposed to a hundred.
Uh, so the hundred comes off the center of the road.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying same thing.
Yeah, so I, I.
I'm saying, you're, are you, you're saying, I think, uh, instead of it being a hundred, it'll be ninety.
No, uh, that setback will still stay the same, it's just that, instead of being forty foot of that being right away, it'll be fifty foot of that'll potentially be used, it will still be forty foot right away. But we might have some portion of that that goes into the site a little bit more, and obviously pushing the utilities into that area. Um, might have some discussion about potentials to re- reforest some of those areas too, so.
Yeah, they're not gonna want any, any trees planted in a utility corridor.
Yeah, so those, those.
They won't allow the trees to be planted as long as they're small trees.
Yeah, it might change the character of what we're trying to put in there, so, yes, there might be at least discussion that we could allow some, some stuff to pass into the area, but if there's o- overhead lines, which there are along the roadway. Um, it's hi- I highly doubt the power company will agree to bury those that are along the front edge, we might be able to bury a, a portion of them, at least around the entrance, but. I'll have to talk with them about how we do that, the overhead lines that run along the roadway are a lot more expensive to bury, and power company usually wants easy access to them, so. I don't, we're burying utilities inside the site, but my guess is they're probably not gonna allow us to bury anything out there.
Well, I know that you, from my personal experience is also that, that the utility company refused to bury the lines when they wanted more. They wanted a wider, uh, right, well, not a right away, but an easement.
Yeah.
On our property, they said, well, why don't you just bury them? No, they wouldn't do it.
They wouldn't do it, yeah, yeah, I, my guess is they'll probably, uh, push back on that.
I'd also like to keep the ditch closer to Harlem and not lose some of that buffer, but the mailbox is a bigger concern to me.
I agree, I think the mailboxes are a big concern.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause it becomes.
It's just so much congestion on a very busy road to.
I hate to necessarily use this term, but I'm gonna say it anyway, to me, it becomes an eyesore.
Yeah, understood, understood.
So the ditch setback, they just want it back farther in the hypothetical event that they make the road wider.
Correct.
Even though nobody else on the road has a ditch setback further, so they'd have to. Set everybody else back eventually anyways.
Correct, yeah, it's, it's, uh, that and recovery zone, they call it a recovery zone, but it's when your car goes off the road. They have more cha- more of a chance of getting back on the road before you hit the bottom of the ditch. Those are the typical explanations that I get from them, why they push for that.
Uh, I'm sorry, what's the current ditch setback again?
Uh, current, it's within the existing right away, but it's, I'm gonna say the center of the ditch is probably back, uh, six to eight feet versus, um, probably more like a fifteen to fifteen to twenty foot setback.
And I feel like that's a ditch to stop you sooner before you got closer to my property, I know, I'd rather you.
And the whole point is that, you know, the, the design element of, of, of screening the development. Is basically out, out the window.
Correct, correct.
And, and I, I don't, I.
It reduces it.
Yeah, but it reduces it to the point where you'd be able to see through it rather than have a dense tree line, tree line.
I mean, ten feet can be a lot of vegetation.
Yeah, it could, could be a few trees for sure, yeah.
Um, I mean, you, you know, you're pushing back on our behalf, but, you know, I, I mean, I think the county engineer. Deals only with moving traffic quickly, it's the only, you're only.
I agree.
And, and that's not even the current code anymore.
Right.
They've got a new book.
Mm hmm.
Um. And I would just say, you know, that's not the design that we've, that we envisioned for the, for the development.
Well, pass that on in addition, but I'll tell them you're definitely fighting harder for the CBUs, but, um, the idea that we want to try to preserve more of that corridor up front. I do think there's an opportunity within our design and what I've discussed with, uh, client, is just some discussion about maybe allowing some of that reforestation to enter the first two lots. If that area is not needed, since they're likely gonna be selecting home builders for the project, that's something we can discuss as well to help at least create that appeal. Um, one of the items that I add.
For people that are buying those lots that are right up to front there, they, I would think they'd be supportive of that.
Yeah, I, I think the idea of, uh, maybe not dense tree, something that they could mow under, but, um, encouraging some vegetation, we had some required plannings already in the development plan. And we discussed the flexibility about some of those, we might push some of those toward the entrance just to, to give the opportunity for some screening, so street trees is an example. Uh, utilizing them in that area and maybe supplementing them with some additional screening there, even if it's evergreens on the first couple lots. That's something the developer might be interested in putting in, just to help provide some of that screening. So I was surprised when, uh, it got back the engineering plans, uh, one of the things that we had talked about, this is the roadway here, the entrance, uh, in Harlem Road. Uh, this basin got bigger, um, it originally pushed up next to the, in between the house and the roadway, so, uh, we've pulled it back. Uh we've pulled it back. This reflects the future vision and kind of put making sure it's behind the building pad, but uh this wetland. Uh it'll have some areas for reforestation around the edge, and it actually calls for trees within the wetland itself, so a different type of tree. Um but we're trying to uh ensure that the dense uh screening can be maintained around that entryway there, so uh this reflects a little bit more of the character. Um Bad Scientist, Mark Dilly, uh prepared this, so uh. They're marking up the engineering plans to try to make sure that the grading is sufficient to make it look and feel more like a natural wetland than an engineered wetland. So I have two parties kind of clashing with each other, but Mark's comments are on here in in color, so you can see those. Um he wanted to stress that the dark blue would be potential standing water on an average basis. The other blue would hold water and it would go away, so the actual standing water would be micro pooled into specific areas. Um this, the water goes into this area and sets and filters before it goes into this area. And then similarly, this wouldn't hold water, but this would shed water to this, and then it pulls in here before it leaves the site uh at the discharge, so. Um this will back water up and then under heavy rain situations, it will fill with water, but you'll only see water in these areas where the vegetation. Wouldn't permit, would permit you to see through it, so you might see some some trees at the edge of these, but he's labeled them at four foot plus in water, so um you'll you'll likely see water at some of those locations, but there'll be. Buffer grasses and things around them to discourage geese and discourage the look and feel of a retention basin. So um I asked for color renderings, but we got the other plan back this morning, so he didn't give me color renderings of what they're to look like. Um but it's my understanding that he's gonna make sure he shares those with you guys before they break ground on the project, so should have some more stuff. Um some of these areas, these are specifically called out for like a larger island where trees could exist. Uh and I think they're gonna try to do something similar in here, so I asked for a zip it on each of the basins, just to give you some idea. This is the larger basin, which we call the boot. Um.
It certainly looks like a boot.
It uh came out looking like a boot, at least from an aerial standpoint. I don't think you'll know it's a boot from the ground, but uh.
Cowboy boot.
Yeah. Yeah, it's uh it was interesting how it ended up working out, but um in the toe, that's the outlet, so uh it the inlet's up here and there's also an inlet here, so. The stub street to the east will inlet here, and then the areas off the CAD and the uh north road will inlet here. And again, uh island, uh they're trying to work peninsula in some areas that they can get uh taller vegetation. And then the goal is to just see water standing in those those areas that are more pooled. And again, that'll be about four foot, it's what they're estimating water depth at, four four to five foot somewhere in there.
Does the land already lend itself to doing this, or do you have to excavate it to do that?
Uh this will be excavation, yeah, so it it does, there's an existing ditch. I don't know if you recall, there's a grass ditch that crosses the site, it actually does this. So there's a ditch that goes through the center of this one. This was a natural water way, but we're regrading it to make it. We're re- regrading it to hold water, so it'll discharge water at a slower rate than it was today. So it'll definitely be something hopefully the neighbors see some positive impacts after it's been built like this. But uh part of the discussion, a pond, it's like usually a three to one slope on the side slopes. Uh this is a five to one slope, so on wetlands, you're gonna see a more natural uh edge. So uh it's gonna go into the waterway and it doesn't drop substantially at the pond areas. It's still a five to one uh as it goes into those ponding areas. So it's a, and then a ten to one slope on some of the areas that are where they're pulling it back a little bit more.
Like they see uh. Cattails.
Correct. Uh well, yeah, I think cattails are some of the nap, but they uh there's a control factor to cattails as well, so I think they'll see some of those. Um but there's some other wetland style plants that they wanna encourage because cattails can be a little bit more aggressive. But I think there will be pockets of probably designed and engineered cattails or something similar. He has a list of plants that he's uh calling out um on the uh other drawings that we'll have to. This is the north edge. Uh this one's up along the floodplain area. The floodplain actually edges up here, so you can see portions of it here and portions of it here. Um this would again be a essentially a wetland that will overlook the floodplain, so it'll be catching water before it leaves. And a couple of nice islands in it, so um I asked for these to kind of give you guys a little better idea of what's going on, and I do have copies of them to pass out to you. Uh but from a perspective of their uh. Yeah, it's not better. I uh. I think their discussion was to kind of come up with something that would be a a little bit more of a green environment on a day to day basis and year round. Uh so the plant life that's that Mad Scientist has identified for the wetlands will be something that will help uh maintain an appearance year round instead of just being looking pretty in the spring.
And Amy Duddy's still involved.
She is uh from a prairie standpoint, she's recommended all the plant life from the uh prairies uh and the reforestation areas, so she's really been focused on the areas outside of the wetland. Uh Mad Scientist has been involved in the areas uh within the wetland areas, and then EDG is doing the entire engineering, so uh. We're trying to make sure that their comments are getting reflected as we see these revisions come through.
And would you say that the county engineer is supportive or is?
Yeah, the comments have been good. Delco County Engineer, everybody's been supportive of the project. Um some of the discussion instantly, uh they didn't understand, I think, the push for micro pooling and and wetlands, um but I I think uh from a maintenance standpoint. It's something we're gonna have to educate the uh lower soil and water conservation district on. Uh Justin with our our client, the developer for the project, uh wanted to make sure that I stressed that um this has taken a lot longer. Probably because of the wetland and some of the uniqueness of the the to get through the review process, but uh and the design process. But we're happy with the result. We're happy to push forward, but um they're hoping to break ground in April, and uh part of the discussion is uh we have. A lot of this uh last minute negotiations to make sure that the wetlands are are adequate. Um that's happening right now to make sure that uh this design and this look and feel uh will pass through the engineer's office, and then. Ultimately, they have to accept it on a ditch maintenance program, and it's my understanding that's why they're being a little bit more critical to make sure that it's uh lower maintenance, so. Um they're asking for the homeowners association, for example, to be charged with a little bit more of the maintenance components uh to make sure, because. Uh I think if they had it their way, like the roadway, you know, engineers just won't want bigger and wider and smoother and cleaner, uh they'd rather have ponds, so.
Well, I think just like with you being the guinea pig for the PRCD, this development going through with these wetlands as a guinea pig for, it sounds like the county sort of as a whole, they don't really do this. I'm happy that they're going to go this direction, and I hope they continue to go this direction on other things, so. I know it may have taken more time for you and your client and everything, but I I hope that it is well worth it in the long run, because I think. From a zoning standpoint, it's it's been the best way for us to get the township residents what they want.
And I think it's a of of moving forward.
Yeah.
Of of how that sort of. Develop.
Yes.
Sure.
Um. On ditch maintenance, uh the county commissioners have to approve that?
They do, correct.
That hasn't happened yet.
No, that'll actually happen after construction in Platte, so uh the county engineer recommends it as part of the design process. We build it, and then they'll accept it after.
How far upstream is that ditch maintenance?
It'll be the entirety of the site, so.
But not off the site.
Not offsite, right? They they so they'll expand that as um other property owners come into ditch maintenance. But this project, um because there's a fee for involved for the uh it's two percent of the improvement value has to be paid upfront, and then two percent's assessed on this project every year. Um so uh they'll continue to do that usually until they get about ten percent, fifteen percent of the value, and then they stop collecting from the property owners, uh assuming they haven't used it.
Yeah.
So that's why I say in this case, the ditch maintenance, they might continue to pay if there's more maintenance costs, so it might be an added cost to the homeowners that buy and build in here, but. Very small and negligible one because it's negotiated over the entire project, so all twenty six lots would pay into that.
Right, and it and but it becomes part of their property tax assessment.
Correct, yep. Called the wetland tax. Yeah, but in a good way. I I think uh they're they're excited about marketing the project. They've had a couple of home builders that have been interested. Um because of the size and nature of the homes, the common access drive would be a paved drive, likely twenty foot wide. I think that's the way it's been highlighted on the plans. So it'll look and feel like a public street. It just won't be the responsibility of the township to maintain it, so. Um that'll be privately maintained, so we did decrease the amount of road. Uh density stayed the same, open space actually gained a little bit uh with the. Uh ju- adjustment to the street stub and not having to have a cul-de-sac. Um so uh. I think in general, when I reviewed the major versus minor stipulations, we were definitely within the minor category. I I know I said we didn't have to have a public hearing, and Mike, I know we talked just in general about how you guys approve it. Um if you wanna have a separate meeting to talk through any of it, I'm welcome to do that, but I I think in general. Um my goal is to come back to you as final engineering is approved maybe in two to three months, and then we can talk through if there's any uh thing we can do outside of that engineered plan. So I wanted to get comments to take back to the county engineer now. Make sure Mike's able to support the engineering plans as they get signed off, especially with the reconfiguration of the roadway. And the basins, and then uh yeah, um it's it's a new process for me too because of the wetlands, so uh. I would say I I absolutely love what's happened with it. It's uh definitely taken a little bit to get there, so I I think we're gonna plan on coming back to you once engineering is approved, though, and we'll have that further conversation.
In terms of looking at uh this as a modi- a minor modification for us to deal with, um. You walked us through it.
Yep, I walked you through the packet as well.
And then uh I I mean, I can see the the drawings here are reflective of what you've been holding up.
Yes. Yeah, so the letter itself.
Here that would address the the um. Uh post office boxes, right?
Yeah, I did not highlight the post office box conversation in here because uh it's ultimately something we can't. We can have influence and maybe pushing back, same with the ditch setback, but because we can't ultimately say no to them if they push, continue to push us. I haven't talked about the ditch setback or the post office box, so I'll take those comments back, but I didn't look at that as an outright um um discussion on an amendment to the PRCE, so.
Yeah.
But the items that I did, there's three there, um renaming the development, uh the the configuration of the road change along with the uh. Um open space uh getting modified, lot layout getting modified, and then the third one was the uh removal of that northwest stormwater basin. I felt like all three of those were substantial character changes to the plan that I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of. Um but I will highlight that the mailbox location and I obviously needs to be addressed as well. Uh and then the uh ditch setback if it ends up getting pushed, but we'll push back on those and hopefully those won't be requested amendments. And then uh I went through one through nine. And that's where I was mentioning that I didn't see anything in there. You're welcome to read my comments. I boxed the code code sections. Some of them it didn't sound like were applicable. They might be more relevant for a commercial project, but I I tried to be um respectful, at least making sure that none of those were uh. Getting triggered with what we were proposing.
Well, we would uh at this point, look at including this as an uh action item on our agenda for February five.
Okay, sounds great. I'll plan to uh to rejoin uh come come back. Uh if I can get the color renderings, I'll bring those. Um I know a lot of their stress right now, it's been trying to get the wetlands uh ready for construction. Um but uh I did ask them to give us some some idea of the look and feel, not just from a two D perspective, but maybe a little bit of what to expect, and Mad Scientist is uh they're they're excited to provide that.
And then um. Any additional, are you, at this point, I guess, what I'm trying to think of in terms of what you're talking about with additional engineering plans and and continuing to to work with the county engineer's office on this. Are you anticipating that there's gonna be something else, or will this, you think, be the modifications in total?
I think those.
Consider.
Those will be the modifications in total. I don't expect lots of roads to change at this point, so uh that's why I felt comfortable bringing it back to you, but um as far as the thirty six page plan set. And whatever that ends up becoming and and signed off on, um that'll have to bring back in more entirety, but it'll be the. Tech more technical components of the project from this point forward. Um I did, uh we got feedback originally from the fire department. I think I need to resubmit to the fire department with the new road configuration as well, so. Uh I don't think that submittal's been heard yet or reviewed yet, so we'll get their feedback um to make sure they're comfortable here at the township.
The end of it stubbed for a turnaround.
Yeah, there'll be a temporary turnaround, but um that temporary will probably be a more permanent design, at least not knowing when when and if the road will get extended.
That'd have to be large enough to accommodate the turnaround for the fire department.
Correct, yeah, it's it's pretty sizable on the plans. If you've seen it there, it'll.
I haven't looked at that yet, but.
You'll be able to see it from the aerial at least. Maybe not space, but you'll be able to see it from the aerial. I I do think it's a better design than the cul-de-sac um at the end. We were talking about uh maybe putting a cul-de-sac in that can be modified. Uh but when we looked at other projects where that had happened, uh the bulb still stayed when the next developer came in, and it just doesn't look and feel right, so we feel like this would be a better, especially with the potential. That they would wanna stub to the east, this would be a better better project, so. I think it'd be more likely you'll see a common access drive proposed to the east than a full-fledged public road. I think they're just trying to preserve that property to be able to have access to a roadway. As development occurs.
Oh, and it will eliminate, help to eliminate just an isolated development where nothing else is connected.
Correct, yeah.
Something that we want to make sure that we try to avoid.
Yeah, they like the curvature of the road. They like that we try to avoid cut through traffic here, so I think everything that we had talked about with you guys in the zoning commission level. Um they they took into consideration minus the stuff we talked about tonight, so.
Now, you'd be able to come and attend the meeting on the fifth, in case there are additional questions that.
Yes, that is my hope to hope to be here for sure, yes.
Okay.
I'm planning on it.
That I will plan to have this on the agenda for discussion and, as I said, as an action item.
Okay, sounds great. If there's anything else you need from me in the meantime, let me know.
I will. I mean, if anyone has any questions, you know, that. Um I can have ask, maybe it's easier for you if the if the questions would be funneled through me, or we can have them contact you directly, whatever you.
Which whichever works best for you guys. I'm I'm fine. I uh my email.
The rest of us will need to know, but we can't do it collectively until we come back to a meeting.
I got you, yeah. You feel free to reach out independently if that helps your process. That's that's good. Yeah, I'll leave the uh bigger plan board with you if that helps any of the reviews do. Might leave with you.
I think leave that with Mike, yes.
Then uh, yeah, I I would say in general, uh I'll plan on bringing a conversation, but um I might send those to you electronically, just so you have them for the overhead if that uh or I bring a laptop.
If you bring a la- uh or, you know, we can connect in that way, then it'll be available for the folks at home to see in terms of uh doing it on Zoom, if. If we have uh any participants that way.
Okay.
Then they would be able to see it. Now Bruce is here, uh he's member of the strategic planning committee, but obviously he's a neighbor.
Yes.
Uh they were all involved and they liked the change, the fact that you brought this in the way that you have. Very supportive of it versus what the original concept was.
Okay, great.
We're all pleased with that. Thank you very much, John.
Well, thank you, guys. Hope you have a good evening. Yeah, look forward to seeing you next month.
And Justin Forrest too, I think.
The developer.
Yeah.
All right, good night. Uh. Moving on with the agenda, folks, uh zoning fees. Uh Mike and I were talking about this briefly before the uh. Meeting began uh in terms of our organization meeting, so uh in summary, Mike. What you and I had discussed was that at this point, the zoning fees have been approved.
Yeah.
And you had no specific requests or recommendations at this point.
Yeah, I have not, not not to mention, if we see something that needs to be changed, we can discuss something, change it a million year anyway. I mean, we changed it after I got here, about two months after I got here, so. It's not that big a deal, but I don't see any any reason to change anything. I think the only thing that we did discuss was. Possibly about refunds on if somebody's application got denied, but I think it's a better idea. I think you agreed, Mike, that. Uh we'll take that on a case by case basis. That way, there's no expectation.
Did we put fences?
Yeah, I was gonna say, what about the fence fee? You wanted to add, did you add that or no? I don't care.
No, we haven't added the fence.
Yeah, I mean, you, at this point. We don't have anything in in our zoning to address fences specifically.
We don't.
So other than fences, as they may come about within the uh overlay districts where fences are addressed, that's the only places where they would currently.
Yeah, and and a lot of that's gonna be addressed in any place that's got an HOA or anything like that when it comes.
Well, that's, yeah, the HOAs will definitely be.
I don't think it's gonna be that big of a deal.
Okay.
So the fees are the same, right? As they were last year, I think. Cool.
So if an issue arises, we'll deal with it when that happens.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Um the the other items I have on here, review of the planned residential uh conservation overlay application and procedural guidelines for the overlay. Um I handed, I think at our last meeting, I handed out copies of the current version. I don't know whether you guys remember it or not. The question that basically I think you need to deal with is we don't, we will need an application. And in fact, can we have one application that we could utilize for all of the overlay districts? Instead of having multiple applications. We developed the uh and approved back in November of it's twenty one or twenty two. I think twenty one. For the P R C D. So that we could have an application for that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh as we, once we adopt new standards. Then that applic- that application and the procedures uh will no longer fit. They won't match the new documentation. But at the same time, I'm not sure that we need to have procedures or procedural guidelines other than uh making sure that we specify those additional things that are required that are not going to be included or not included in the procedures that are in article thirty two. Or thirty three, depending upon which overlay district uh we're we're talking about. So the application form could be relatively simple, I think. He's trying to apply for all of them. See, Tom's looking at it. I don't necessarily want to spend time discussing it other than to ask you that general question about how do we proceed? I don't know that we have to rewrite a set of procedures when we can just refer to the documents that
Right.
Uh that we have adopted in the within the articles.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then, but we do need a form that people would fill out. And we may need to identify these other elements, the uh in terms of uh getting the deed and permission submitted as a part of the application.
My notes on here said that DG would convert this to a Word document.
Yeah, as soon as you guys have whatever you um
So.
Yeah, but this see this part down here would have to be modified a little bit, obviously, because it's making reference to the existing.
Right.
Uh it was making reference to the existing and it still exists. It hasn't been changed yet. So the narrative part would be the part that would have to change.
Yeah, but I I guess it's easier to edit if it's in Word than if it's a PDF document. You have to scratch it. Scratch it, well, easy.
Do we have this in in um uh Word format?
I we didn't.
We didn't before, because all I have is the uh PDF file. I don't have a Word document.
But you were saying that that you could with your expertise, you could convert it to a Word document.
So if you would then, Daniel, take this existing application form and convert it to a Word document and send that out to us. And then.
You want the P R C D, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And then what we would do would be potentially looking at that in terms of making some changes.
Just the application, right? The application for the P R C D.
Yeah, but I don't know, like I'm saying, I don't know that we necessarily need procedural guidelines. Because the procedures are identified within uh the article.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would tend to agree.
And and this will become a general application for any overlay.
For any overlay district is what I'm thinking.
Residential, not not necessarily the P R C D. It'll become a general.
Overlay.
Correct.
Overlay application.
It would be a an application for any overlay district.
Yeah.
You think that's the way to go with it?
Yeah.
It seems simpler to me, and otherwise you end up with an application for each of the different types of overlay.
So would we want some kind of dropdown then in terms of like
Which overlay?
Overlay you're choosing.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so no checklist for the overlay. If you're applying for an overlay, you better know what you're doing.
Yeah. More or less.
More or less, yeah.
Well, we would I guess would expect that it it more likely will be done by professionals as opposed to the property owner, him or herself. Okay, so the the one thing then that this request DG can simply to go ahead and prepare the existing form. Um you know, convert it to a Microsoft document and then send that out to us.
That we can edit.
I can start editing on it. And then.
You're so speedy. Oh, my God. That's amazing.
If you wanna take a hard copy and make your changes on that, once once we get to the point where we're trying to discuss it. Um and I I don't I don't know whether we would uh have time to do that on the twenty second, or we will need to wait until and twelfth of February.
Um you said um Svet Sanders is gonna be with us on the
Twenty second.
Twenty second, then Joe will be back on.
Will be back on the fifth, but he'll be back on the fifth for us to um I mean, we've got this and we will discuss it in terms of whether or not to approve it as uh the minor modifications. It's the plan. Maybe we do that on the fifth.
Yeah.
And what exactly are we talking with uh Scott about on at our next meeting?
He was going to be uh I identifying um but well, I think we said looking at F R one, N R one in terms of what changes uh
Yep.
we might want to make in those, because those are the well, A R one basically is almost everywhere, and then F R one is the one that that we're changing too. So he was going through F R one and I think bringing us maybe a draft document on the twenty second to begin going through that.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Um one last thing, so the um strategic planning committee is meeting here tomorrow at six thirty. Um basically to wrap up what we've been able to accomplish in twenty twenty three and what we see going into twenty twenty four. Um you have a chance to to be here or to watch it on on Zoom. The number that Holly mentioned this this morning, she said we're probably seventy five percent done with the overlays. Uh we're looking at uh an overlay on the northwest quadrant from Trenton Road South. Um and exactly how that fits into the township, we really haven't nailed down. Uh whether it would be an extension of the existing C R C D or something slightly different. Uh we haven't, we haven't really discussed that in detail. Um and then.
But that's that's what you're talking about being on the agenda for tomorrow night.
Uh that
In terms of.
Probably, we probably won't get to discuss that at all.
Oh, okay.
Uh but then the other question is um the the zoning on the uh on the development plan from the uh uh the Center Village District.
Oh, yes, that was.
How that town center is is the extent of it, how we're gonna incorporate J R two into it. Um you know, what the boundaries are, how the roads are gonna be detailed. So there's a lot of work on that. Center Village, now walkable town center, we keep calling it.
We definitely, we're looking forward to that, Tom.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, anybody else have anything else uh that we need to bring to the table tonight?
I just am curious about that house still at the jog at Harlem and Gorsuch. There it's still up for sale. What have they done about the two residences issue?
Providing a covered walkway to make it one residence.
That counts?
Apparently it does.
If they're gonna, I the last time I looked, it wasn't connected.
Yeah, they're not connected.
There's a gap.
And my understanding from our zoning code is you can't have a two family property anyway. You're not allowed to have two residences on a property.
They're not separate, they won't be separate residents.
They combine them in some connection. It'll count as one residence.
But do we allow two family houses just in general?
It's a grandmother suite.
There's there were there are such properties in the township, and there's one up on Harlem Road. I can't tell you the exact number.
Yeah.
Street address, but it.
I just, my understanding from our code was that wasn't allowed. Now, I understand that's a hard thing to police, because you know, who's who's looking to see if you've added a kitchenette into your basement and have your mother-in-law living there?
Or a stranger.
Well, yeah, or a stranger. But I mean, this one seems fairly easy to police, because it was advertised on the internet.
Yeah.
That's been taken down, I understand, from Mike.
Yeah.
There's no longer advertising it that
As a.
As a uh potential rental.
Yeah.
But it's still being advertised, I think, as potential mother-in-law suite.
It just seems odd. I didn't think that was allowed, and they are not connected. There's daylight between them.
Now, they've gotta be connected as as far as I can remember.
Yeah.
They're supposed to be connected.
If you live in it.
A covered walkway or something, yeah.
So like if I put a bedroom in my shop, I would have to connect it to my house. That's bananas. Glad I didn't do that.
A walkway, yes.
Yeah.
So you know, it's list I so that potentially. But the one bedroom is in a separate structure.
They operated some of their business out of the garage.
It's out there. You have to
Yeah, she had to.
In the winter, it might be a little chilly, but it's not an enclosed walkway.
Yeah, well, when we redid our house, our one bathroom was in the shop. And in the winter, you know, if you had to go to the bathroom in the middle of the night. It was it was rough. And we had our kitchen in our basement. No enclosed walkway. I remember running back and forth, like, please don't let my hair freeze after you go out to the shop to take a shower. It was it was a little rough for a while.
Pint your heart in.
Yeah.
Well.
Okay.
You've done that uh covered walkway between the two, and now you have another bedroom.
Do it. Huh, well, now we know. It's a long covered walkway.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I only know I never might be more than one, but I know of at least one.
What if I dig a tunnel?
I don't know. Can't see it, so you'd have to prove it to us that it's it's connected. Oh, you'd have to prove it to mine.
I need to borrow the boring machine from the sewer development to get to get under, but.
Mike will be the person who will say it is or it isn't in compliance.
Yeah.
But uh it's you know, you don't wanna, we we can't have two residences on the same property. Where um they're separate residences. There can be two separate buildings. But it's one residence, somehow it's connected. That's what I understand legally when comes the requirement. Now, the other, what you're identifying, I know what you're saying, because I looked at it too, I drove by it. Uh yesterday or the day before, and I thought, well, there's a gap there.
Yeah, the roofs do not touch. There is no.
They're not connected.
No.
There's a the walkway. There's no specific walkway. There's just, I as I looked anyway, it's like part of the parking area. And they directed this.
It might it might have a concrete path. I don't, I can't tell you, but the roofs don't touch.
No, the roofs are do not touch, but that if that's all it takes, that would be and it should be a relatively easy fix for them to do.
Yeah.
Well, Mike has left, so he didn't hear this discussion. We'll be sure to point it out to him. I mean, what do you?
Motion to adjourn? Bring any motions to adjourn?
I second it.
Tom seconds.
I'm ready for it anytime. All right, there's the motion and Tom seconded. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we are adjourned at nine oh five. You can get home, you might even catch the second half of the football game.
Thank you, Brittany.
All right, folks. Into next year, twenty four is here.
Yeah.
February twenty seventh technically, but I have yet to make it to the due date.
You said earlier, eight months?
Don't suggest that. That's after my due date.
Uh Virginia, when is the due date?
February twenty seven.
Twenty seven.
But Alba was born on Labor Day, Ida was born on Easter, my husband is born on M L K Day, so my prediction is Valentine's Day. That's my prediction. Either Valentine's Day or President's Day. Yeah, well, President's Day could be Washington, could be Lincoln, you know, we could go, we could go either way.
Closer to uh to your due date, right?
Yeah.
You say the February eighteen?
Yeah, but.
Well, actually, it's kind of in between.
And both girls were early, so I imagine this one will be early as well, so.